Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given February 2nd, 2024. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard for from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard for must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering in the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Order, arm. Enter, face. Arms. Or, march.
Thank you. Please be seated. Vice President Smith, could you please lead us in the vision and mission?
The vision: every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Juarez.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Paul.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the school spotlight with Principal Dionne Kirsey.
Good evening. President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and interim Superintendent Ray. The OPS Proud Spotlight recognizes Central High Lucy Rollinson for earning a perfect score on the ACT. Lucy has been involved in National Honor Society, the book club, the math club, and student council. I introduce you to Lucy. So as you can see, she's very humble. We are extremely, extremely excited about this opportunity for this recognition. And if you have any questions for her, we'd like to hear them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, colleagues? Ms. Juarez?
Yes, Lucy, I'd just like to know, were you pretty nervous the day of the test? Or how'd you feel that day?
I was pretty nervous. I didn't want to like mess it up, but I would have been happy with any high score. So I wasn't putting too much weight on it. And I'd already taken it before, so I wasn't as much stressed because everyone from my school was there.
Ms. Cassidy?
Well, congratulations. Thank you so much for being here. I'm just curious, what was your regimen? How much did you study? What was your pre? Did you take classes, pre-classes, I guess, the pre-test? What was kind of your method to obtaining your perfect score?
I didn't study too much before. I looked over the subjects that I was weaker in and just hit practice questions days and before, I guess. And then I'd had taken it a couple of times before, so it wasn't stressful.
Well, I think everybody out there is probably hoping you would have said like all of these things that you did, so. Well, congratulations. What a great accomplishment. You make us so OPS proud. Thank you.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Head. Congratulations. That's really a remarkable achievement. I don't remember the details, but I do remember reading in the Omaha World Herald recently that there's a new "Please Stay in Omaha Scholar," or "In Nebraska Scholarship" for students that get perfect scores. So I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I really hope that you decide to take advantage of that scholarship. Please stay in Nebraska. Congratulations.
Ms. Crackey?
I just want to know, what does it feel like when you found out? Was it in the mail? Was it in an envelope?
No, it was online. So I heard one of my friends found out their score. And then I didn't think I got mine back because I didn't get an email. But then my mom called me and she like screamed it over the phone. And I was shocked, but she was really excited.
I think it's great. Congratulations.
Any other questions, colleagues? Well, again, congratulations. We couldn't be prouder of you. If you could, please come around with a, I'd like to give you a fist bump handshake. We have a pin for you as well.
Make sure you come back and visit us for sure.
Moving on to board and superintendent communications, the treasurer's report. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board of education, and interim superintendent Mr. Ray. The financial reports for the period ended December 31st, 2023, have been finalized and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Interim Superintendent Mr. Ray?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board and our community. The students of the Omaha Public Schools are the strength of the Omaha Public Schools. Lucy is a perfect example, and I've had an opportunity to meet two other groups this last week. We have many student accomplishments to celebrate. Last weekend, more than 1,000 student musicians from the Omaha Public Schools took the Holland Center stage. It marked our 74th annual All-City Music Festival. Students performed in band, orchestra, and choir. It was absolutely incredible. Our students, staff, and families were all there to enjoy the concerts. We featured student stories from more with, about working with professional musicians, learning the ukulele and more. As the Nebraska's largest school district, students benefit from countless opportunities in fine and performing arts. Saturday also brought students together for the African-American History Challenge. 100 Black Men of Omaha organizes the event every year. Teams spent months learning and preparing for the event. Congratulations to Brian High and Mars Middle for winning their division. Thank you to 100 Black Men of Omaha for hosting this important event for the last 24 years. We are proud to have have been part of this since the beginning. A copy of tonight's congratulations report is posted on the agenda and will be part of our district's announcement on OPS.org. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. And moving on to board comments, start at the left. Ms. Cassidy?
Okay, I'm not used to going first. Thank you. Okay, a couple things. Wanted to piggyback on your comments, Mr. Ray, on African-American History Challenge. So just want to point out, Mars Middle, I believe that was like, I know it was a repeat. Might have been a three-peat. So I know they'll be at the board table at some point, but my second event that I wanted to talk about, I've never been to this before, and I'm so glad I finally came. The Spelling Bee was this week. Yes! I've never been to the Spelling Bee. It almost always falls around my daughter's birthday. And so there's been years that I've been like Spelling Bee or celebrate my child's birthday. So this year, though, I was able to come to the Spelling Bee and it was, let's just say it was humbling because I spent a lot of time on my phone looking up words because I, number one, either didn't know what they meant, or, number two, did not know how to spell them, or a combination of both. So it was very humbling, but I will say 23 students participated, and it was intense. Like I was like nail-biting the whole time for these students. It was very, it was challenging, and some of the words were just, like I said, crazy. The winner, Lewis and Clark, I'm not sure of her name, but the finalists were two gals. She, I can't remember her name, so I'm really sorry, Lewis and Clark, but Lewis and Clark took the championship. And all the students did great, though. It was really fun to see. I sat with Susan Ernst, a teacher at Mars Middle School, and she is the one that told me that that evening that Mars had won the African-American History Challenge. So I told her I would give a quick shout-out to Mars for winning again. So kind of a fun week for OPS and for our students. Congratulations to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Full?
Thank you. I just wanted to pull a Erdnberger and just, and talk about something on the consent agenda. I've seen it pop up a couple times in our agenda, and I haven't made any comments about it, but I just really wanted to say how happy I was that we are doing more partnerships with Boys Town in regard to social, emotional learning, and it looks like common sense parenting workshops and training sessions. If you didn't know, I actually, I went to OPS for pretty much all my life until I was 16, and I went to Boys Town, and I graduated from Boys Town. And they really changed my life and put me on the right track. And I'm so glad that OPS is partnering with them to help our students and our parents, you know, be better and more successful so they can show up to school, get good grades, do their homework, participate in extracurriculars, and just be a normal child and grow and learn. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Erdnberger?
Does that mean I'm pulling a full? I just wanted to bring your attention to an item on the consent agenda, which is we are approving the purchase of dental equipment for the Benson High Medical Clinic. If you haven't been paying attention to what's going on or hadn't noticed what's happening over at Benson, we're adding a medical clinic to the north side of the building, which, when it opens, will include, apparently, a dental clinic as well. It'll be a neighborhood health clinic, and it will serve as a collaboration with the Health Sciences Academy that is currently exists at Benson High School. So we're very excited to approve that purchase and look forward to the completion of that project. Thank you, President Head.
Thank you. Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Head. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to say briefly. One of them is I did go to the music event that was down at the Holland. I'm always so proud that we have that facility available to our students because I just think it's a tremendous opportunity for them. And I was able to listen to the chorus, the choral music side. I didn't make it for the band. And it was absolutely amazing, amazing. I was so impressed. And I wanted to thank all of the staff who helped those talented students bring out their beautiful skills that they have. I don't know how much work it takes for that final performance, but it certainly paid off, and I wanted to thank everyone for that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention, and I guess I'm doing this very biasedly and saying it on behalf of OPS alum that I am from South High, but my mom's going to turn 100 next Tuesday. And she was in the paper, and I wanted to give a shout-out to my mom of an, who's a mother of an OPS grad and share with you my happiness and joy about that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crackey?
First, I wanted to comment on the Boys Town and how great I think it is. And also, I was looking at parenting workshops and training sessions. Do you have to be invited to go to that as a parent? Or someone in the district maybe thinks you should go, or do you go and pay for it yourself?
We'll follow up with that question and provide it to you.
We're waiting. Aren't we waiting for her, Lisa?
Well, we'll give that information to you.
Oh, okay. And the other thing was, we've been very busy this week. And tonight, they're going to announce the finalist of the superintendent search. And I just want you to know that the board has worked very, very, very hard, just not only this last week, but previous to that, too. We've been very, very busy. And so that isn't ready for release yet, but good luck to all the people. And we enjoyed all of them that got to come and speak in Omaha Public Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, President Head. First off, I want to say Happy Black History Month to everybody out there. I also attended the African-American History Challenge, and I think Mars won because we went in their room and stole their snacks. But great job. I just wanted to recognize, again, the 100 Black Men of Omaha, educators, the students, the parents, the community-based organizations who really support that effort to make it a a success. And again, thank you, Board members, for all the work that you've put in over this past year to get to where we are, and also the people behind the scenes, the people who have been able to support us so we could get to this point right now. So thank you to all the educators out there. I appreciate your work.
Am I allowed to just say ditto? No, but I, I also attended the African-American History Challenge with Mr. Smith. Mr. Ray was there. I don't know if our stealing the snacks was necessarily why Mars won, but I'll absolutely take credit for it. No, but thank you for everybody who hosted the event. Ms. Cassidy, I'm glad you were able to make the Spelling Bee. I made it last year, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event for, for a number of our students to showcase their talents. I got stuck in Lincoln after testifying and wasn't able to make it this year, but hopefully I'll be able to again in the, in the near future. Sounded like the, the concerts went amazing over the weekend as well, so congratulations to everybody who participated in All-City Music. We'll have more comments later on about the, the search, the committee, and so I'll save those comments for later. With that, we will be moving to public comment and recognition. So we have one speaker who has requested a request to speak for, or submitted a request to speak for him tonight. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinion of all who speak and refrain from applause or outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a staff member or a student, please do not identify them and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland, and she will make sure each copy of the Board gets, or each member of the Board gets a copy. I apologize. As a reminder, Nebraska Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board identify yourself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, except our testifier tonight as a student, so that policy is waived. So again, please remain seated until called to the podium. Do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, let Dr. McFarland know, and she'll get them from you. It is now 6:21 PM, and our first speaker is Charles Yale.
Good evening, Dr. McFarland. I do have copies of the speech to hand out to each member of the Board here. President Head, Vice President Smith, Interim Superintendent Ray, and members of the Board of Education, my name is Charlie Yale, spelled C-H-A-R-L-I-E-Y-A-L-E. I testified at the last board meeting surrounding LB 1071. I'm back today to address your concerns with this legislation and to work with you to protect student journalists in our district and across the rest of Nebraska. At the last board meeting, the Board addressed concern about the public forum clause in this piece of legislation. The Board then received a letter from the Student Press Law Center looking to address these concerns. I'm open to addressing and answering any questions surrounding this letter. But then, in a World Herald article on January 26th, President Head voiced some concerns about liability within the legislation. I understand President Head's concerns, and I want to come here to address them tonight. First, I want to talk about who the burden of liability falls upon under this legislation. President Head explained in the January 26th article that, quote, "The district is still the entity that's legally liable if anything that happens. If anything gets published that goes against the rule, the district gets sued," end quote. This, according to the bill, though, is not our interpretation. It's important to recognize that this bill doesn't hold the district accountable for what students publish. In Section 2, Subsection 6, the bill states that, quote, "No publication or other expression of matter by a student journalist in the exercise of rights under this section shall be deemed to be an expression of a public high school's policy," end quote. This means that, under this legislation, it would be impossible to hold the district accountable for the speech of its student journalists. In the status quo, districts have less protections against this type of litigation. And it's also important to note that, once again, there has never been a case of a school being held liable in court for the content of a student publication, according to the Student Press Law Center. There are 17 other states around the country who have new voices legislation in place, and none of them have gone up in flames yet. Many of their policies have been in place for 20-plus years, which is why it's important that Nebraska follows suit. Moreover, the type of speech that we worry about in this bill is not permitted under 1071. Section 2, Subsections A through E detail what is and what is not permitted as protected speech under this legislation, including libel, invasion of privacy, violations of the law, departure from ethical standards, and crucially, speech that presents a, quote, "clear and present danger to violation of the school's policies of a high school that would cause material and substantial disruption to the orderly operation of such school," end quote. When it is absolutely necessary, school administration can step in and hopefully initiate important dialogue around prohibited speech under this legislation. I, as a student journalist, hold myself to a high standard. I hold my staff to a high standard. In the status quo, we produce good journalism, and we make an impact with heavy-hitting stories that report on the issues important to our community. Since our last board meeting, I've had one of my opinion pieces published in the National Civic Review, and my fourth letter to the editor published in the New York Times. We're not allowed to publish careless journalism, and we definitely will not be allowed to publish careless journalism under this legislation. All this legislation does is enshrine the spectacular privileges, the privileges that President Head clearly and properly articulated in this article, until law for me, my staff, all other student journalists in OPS, and the rest of the state. There is no reason to fear good student journalists who are producing quality journalism. Journalistic ethics does not permit the type of speech you are worried about. I would also like to invite the Board to research the positive effects that this legislation has had in other states, to speak with your fellow board members in Iowa, Kansas, Colorado, all of which have student journalism protections, and all of which have had them for significant amounts of time. And if you're not willing to listen to me, because I am not a constitutional law expert, I would encourage you to reach out to the Student Press Law Center. As a high school student, I am not an expert in the niche area of free speech law, but the Student Press Law Center maintains a staff of attorneys whose job it is to understand and advocate on behalf of it. If you have further concerns and would like to hear from lawyers, please absolutely reach out to them. I know that they would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. In summation, I absolutely agree with President Head and the Board. OPS supports its student journalists, and you all work extremely well with us. We know that you want us to be successful, but the concerns that you expressed-
One minute.
-can be easily addressed. To enshrine our further successes into law and to make sure that student journalists across the state can continue to be successful, I once again ask you to, I once again urge you to support this legislation and to write a letter of support to the Legislature. I open myself to any questions from the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Yale. Unfortunately, we can't engage in a dialogue after public comment, but we'll absolutely be in touch with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, at this time, any board member may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed and, from the consent agenda and considered and voted upon separately. Do we have any motions to remove items? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Foll. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, actually, three of us are on Claim C this evening. Do you want me to go ahead and?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Krackey is on Claim C, myself and Dr. Holman are all on Claim C this evening, Item I-10. Thank you.
All right. So I would remind the Board that, sorry, I'd like to remind everyone that approval of the consent agenda is subject to the abstentions of Ms. Krackey, Ms. Cassidy, and Dr. Holman on Item I-10, Claim Report C. Are there any other abstentions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine-Eyed?
Motion carries. Thank you. And at this time, we're going to adjust the order of the agenda a little bit, so we'll begin with the Accountability Committee update, and after that, we'll move to the approval of the Superintendent Candidate Finalists. So anybody following along, that's Item J-1B will be next up. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, President Head. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. The Accountability Committee has worked very, very hard the past few weeks, actually over a year now, and also want to thank the Board members who have been a part of this process. In a moment, our search firm will also announce, will announce finalists. Approving them is an action item on this agenda. Before that, I want to remind our community about the next steps. On Monday, the 12th, staff, families, and the community can meet each finalist. Open house will be from 5:00 to 6:30 PM inside Buena Vista High School. On the 13th, Tuesday, we will interview finalists at a meeting here. It will be livestreamed on OPS.org, like other meetings, and we have emailed this information directly to staff, families, and high school students. We have posted regular updates to our websites, and open communication is very important to us, so if you have questions, please utilize our website, and it is, it is posted. Since May 23rd, community input has guided this process and it continues to. That includes responses to our May 2023 survey, our October 2023 survey, and Fall Community Forum feedback. We are proud to serve Nebraska's largest and most diverse school district, preparing all students for success. We take this responsibility extremely seriously. Community members can always contact us, and again, it's listed on OPS.org backslash Board. Thank you to everyone who's participated in this process so far. We really appreciate the hard work and the dedication you put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you to the entire Accountability Committee. And throughout this process, we have been extremely committed to hiring the best candidate possible to lead this district. And as Mr. Smith said, we're proud to serve Nebraska as the largest school district and also the most diverse school district in the state. Our accountability members, I'll just go ahead and name them, Ms. Juarez, Mr. Smith, Ms. Cassidy, and Dr. Holman, you know, represented subcommittees and sub-districts from North, Southeast, and West Omaha, and they each brought their own diverse experiences and ideas and voices to the table. Throughout the process, we had several surveys, several rounds of community input that brought a whole bunch of voices to the table. We had our surveys that were answered in every single language that they were presented in. And so throughout the process, our search firm for months went out and selected and recruited the best candidates that they could possibly find across the nation. In November, the Board approved of the many places that we would be advertising the job posting, focusing on reaching every qualified candidate possible as well. And again, reflecting on community input that we received through the surveys, through the engagement sessions that we did in the fall, the Board got together, and we voted on the, the ideal attributes of a candidate, but also listening to the community input. The search firm got together and, and found those candidates for us. So we take this process extremely seriously. It's an incredible privilege to represent this district. It's an incredible privilege to represent this community, our students, and our families. So thank you to everyone who participated in the process, and I think we're, I think we're in a good place. Any other comments on the Accountability Committee report before we move forward? All right. We'll move on to Item J-2A, which is the approval of the Superintendent Candidate Finalists. Mr. Smith?
Well, first, we'll check if you can hear me all right. Everybody hear me? Wonderful. Well, Board officers, Board members, interim superintendent, we've been waiting for this day for a long time, and I'm looking forward to moving forward to the next step. Just very quickly, we worked to, we had contact with 62 people, and we encouraged to apply. Within that group, 35, excuse me, 32 started an application, 26 completed an application, and working very diligently through the process, we've narrowed it down to four, as required by the statutes of Nebraska. And with that, with no further ado, what I would say is, oh, I'm going to do one thing different than I usually do. I've looked back, and I've always gone alphabetical order, starting from the front of the alphabet. I'm starting from the back of the alphabet this time. If nothing else, for me, to have a little diversity in terms of this approach. So, the candidates are, in reverse alphabetical order, Luis Solano. Luis is the Deputy Superintendent at, in Detroit Public Community School District, a district of about 50,000 students, similar in size to Omaha Public Schools. Candidate number two, Matthew Ray, Interim Superintendent, Omaha Public Schools. You, of course, are familiar with Matthew's background and, and his work in the school district. Third is Christopher Bernier, who is the Superintendent of, of the school district of Lee County, Florida. It'd be a district of about 98,000 students. And the fourth candidate would be Tom Ahart, former Superintendent, Des Moines Public Schools in Iowa, 32,000 students. I appreciate all of your work, and all the, all the staff, their work, and all the input that was received, and everything that went into this process. I would say it was seamless, and we had great support. I can't, I really can't say more about the support we received from the district and the Board. I'm looking forward to moving to the next stage. We await the approval action on the part of the Board regarding the naming of finalists.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve the identified Superintendent finalist, finalist to move towards the next step in the stages.
All right. We have a motion. As it's a committee motion, it doesn't require a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Ms. Foll?
Thank you. I'm not going to get into specifics tonight, but I just wanted to say how incredibly impressed I was by all of the candidates and how difficult it was for me, you know, to rank them. They were truly all exceptional. I thank GR Recruiting for their hard work in bringing us these high-quality candidates, and I'm really looking forward to the next couple days as we choose our new superintendent. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? All right. Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Foll? Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Nine-Eyed?
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, moving up to our regularly scheduled business, we have Item J-1A, the College and Career Academies and Pathways update with Ms. Deanna Mosay.
All right, all set. Are you guys good? Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. As indicated last spring, we intend to share with you regular updates regarding college and career academy and pathway implementation. As the data in this chart indicates, we are expanding access to college and career opportunities. The hard work and dedication of our students and teachers are shown through the increases in dual enrollment and industry certification. Our teachers' depth of understanding and special training are preparing students today for the jobs and careers of tomorrow. The graduation rates and advanced academic diploma options are current areas of focus. As shared at previous board meetings, our on-track definition and data tracking are aiding in keeping a sharp focus on graduation for all students. We will share in our next few slides how we are expanding access and elevating expectations so that we can soon see increases in advanced academic diplomas as well. We believe every student has special talents and strengths- We believe every student has special talents and strengths. This is why the Omaha Public Schools offers honors and advanced classes in all nine high schools. Included with tonight's presentation is the Advanced Academic Opportunities booklet. This booklet speaks to all the advanced academic offerings, including the Seal of Bilinguism. Our Advanced Placement Summer Symposium is just one of the ways students are encouraged and provided support for engaging in these courses. Detailed information about our Advanced Placement courses and exams was included in a receipt of report at the January 22nd Board Meeting. The shared booklet referenced earlier also outlines the prestigious Advanced Diploma Programs now being offered in our nine high schools. Through these opportunities, students can be ready to compete with their peers nationally and globally. Here's a look at how we are expanding Advanced Coursework Diploma Programs for each upcoming graduating class. Central High School has offered the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program for over a decade. They are now in the approval stages for including the IB Career-Related Program. AP Capstone is a diploma offering that began at Burke High School in 2019. We currently have a robust offering of Advanced Placement Courses across our district and have seen growth in the recognition of AP Scholars. Expanding access to the AP Capstone Diploma is an important next step. Our course sequence updates have provided access to the Capstone Courses and Diploma to grow from about 10 to 20 students per year to now 300 students. The Cambridge Advanced International Certificate of Education Diploma has begun its implementation process. The four schools are approved through Cambridge International, and schools are now in the final stages of outlining their course offerings that can culminate in this unique diploma. All ninth graders at these schools are introduced to Cambridge through US History and English classes. Our first freshman cohort is underway for the Northwest High School Early College Program. Thank you for your approval of this program with our partner Metropolitan Community College. We look forward to celebrating these 49 students' dual graduation with a high school diploma and associate's degree in the spring of 2027. At the last Board Meeting, the Division of Research provided the graduate follow-up report as receipt of report. What you will see here is a small snapshot of the data included in that full report. This is the data for students who graduated in 2022 and were not yet a part of Freshman Academy or the Pathway Options as we know them within the College and Career Academies and Pathways. This class of 2022 data shares that most graduates feel ready for life after high school, but one year after graduation, some end up in jobs that don't necessarily match what they intended to do. The inclusion of academies and pathways is allowing students to develop and find a path for themselves after high school. For some students, finding the right path begins with earning certifications while still in high school. During the 2022-23 school year, students across our nine high schools and the Career Center earned approximately 1,300 industry certifications. This slide highlights many of the certifications that students earned in the health science field. This is exciting as our graduate follow-up study indicates many students see themselves in health careers. The quotes on the slide share the students' perspective of the impact of these certifications. Here we see additional certifications aligned to trades and business and industry. Earning industry certifications equips high school students with valuable skills, accelerates their entry into the workforce and positions them as competitive candidates for further education. While this is a sampling of the certifications offered, the words shared by students demonstrate the impact of the opportunities. The inclusion of College and Career Academies and Pathways is meeting its implementation targets. Students are making the most of expanded access as we continue to focus on preparing students for college, career and life, and we look forward to bringing back additional updates this summer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, colleagues? Ms. Juarez?
So, I have a question about, how should I say? Do spaces available like in the IB Program? Is it, now you said that's the program that's at Central, correct? So, how is it that you go about making the selection of the students who get to participate? Because in my memory, I can remember that that was one of the complaints I had received from a parent because, you know, there just wasn't enough spaces for all the students who wanted to be a part of that. And I wondered if, is it still the same? Have we been able to possibly expand the number of students that could participate?
We don't have a cap or a max or a limit on the students that select into the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program.
So what you're saying is that any student who wanted to participate in that program could? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Students at Central High School.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you. I think we were all just about to jump in with the Central High School. But to elaborate a little bit on your behalf, we have now made sure there is a program similar, whether it's the AP Capstone or the Cambridge, at all of our high schools.
Correct. All nine high schools have an Advanced Diploma Opportunity. So whether it is the IB Diploma or the AP Capstone Diploma or the Early College Program or the Cambridge International. So no matter where our students get to attend whichever nine high schools, they have an Advanced Academic Diploma offering.
Right, because I know it had been just the IB at Central for a while. So this was a major change. So that's probably what you were remembering. Speaking of the Cambridge program, I saw that implementation is '26, '27. And you may have explained this, but does that mean that '26, '27 is when our first kids start taking it? Or is that when the first kids complete it?
That's when we could see our first graduating cohort with a diploma.
Okay, great, thank you. And actually, the slide that was there a second ago about careers and goals, I just didn't process it quickly enough. So if we could go, yeah, that one, on the far right. A lot, in most cases, there are a lot more students that have a current job in an area that is not what their career goal is. But this is catching kids two years after high school, right? So, is that right?
It's their first year post-graduation.
Okay, so the chances of them being in their career at this point is perhaps not very predictable. But I do see that in the Health Science, which is one of the path academies we have, we have just as many, almost as many kids in it. We have more kids in it than, so that's their career goal. So that's exciting.
Yes. Most of our industry certifications are in the Health Science fields.
Fantastic, that's great, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Excuse me, not so much a question, but just wanted to say thank you for allowing our students to get this opportunity. It's been brought to my attention that there's more need for those technical skills and those trades and those certifications. And so being able to say that we have them here and kids can get that before graduating is excellent. So just thank you for providing that opportunity to our U.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Oh, Ms. Cracky, I apologize.
I just want to thank you for your presentation and the slides. They're really clear, and it's our ability to show them, and we could hear you perfectly well. And it's so much better than it had been before, I just love it. So for anybody out there, just know that we can now see and hear and everything else. And I call this the Star Wars Room because of all of our lights and the way it looks. It's very nice, you should come see it.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for your work and for the report, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to item J2B, the approval of the Report of the Legislative Committee Including Recommended Legislative Positions. Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, Mr. Head. This present, this report will be just about as frantic as the last two weeks have been. We have had one, two, three, four, five, maybe as many as six different members of our admin and Board testifying in front of various committees down in Lincoln. One of us, me, was, pulled the last bill two days in a row, which meant seven o'clock. Although I think you and Mr. Ryan were there pretty late recently, yeah. So just for your information, as you see the positions that we've adopted on all of the bills that relate to education, a number of them are support or oppose with testimony. And we are covering those testimony responsibilities, and it is a pretty major undertaking. We have testified in the last two weeks on bills ranging from class size to the Opportunity Scholarship Funding directly by the state. I have testified in support of several bills that have been introduced to recruit and in some cases retain teachers through scholarships and other incentives to get more teachers in, or students rather, involved in the teaching career. There was a bill concerning incentives about teaching in specific schools in Omaha, which by the way, we opposed. And there were a couple of very complicated property tax levy, freeze the amount of money available to OPS or take money away from OPS that Mr. Head and Mr. Ryan very ably handled for us. And I would like to also give a shout out to Dr. Holman, who pulled a very short straw apparently with whatever that hearing was that she went and talked with in connection with the Opportunity Scholarship Funding, which also we oppose. So thank you to everybody that made the effort to get down to Lincoln and our council who organized it all. Thank you. The only change in our recommended legislative positions that we have at the moment has already basically come and gone. And that was originally LB1414 was going to be testimony, but since we test in opposition, but because we actually testified to its partner bill in opposition, we sent a letter instead of another person down to Lincoln to testify. So there was that slight modification in what we have outlined previously. Other than that, we haven't made any further changes. We will be meeting again tomorrow at noon and figuring out who's going down to Lincoln next week. Thank you very much, that's everything. Any questions? Ms. Full?
Ms. Full?
Thank you. First off, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and to all the Board Members who go down to Lincoln and testify. I was doing this job last year and I do not envy you. It's one of the most difficult jobs on the Board, and you do it very well. I just wanted to follow up about LB1071 and just ask if we have had further conversations in the Legislative Committee about that bill specifically? I know we changed it to Monitor with Research, but I was hoping that the committee had discussed it. And if they have discussed it, have they decided to stay with Monitor with Research forever? Or will we ever consider, you know, will we oppose, will we support?
No, I appreciate you bringing that up and the continued advocacy on behalf by our students. We have not discussed it in detail since we changed it at the table to Monitor and Research. As you know, we did all receive some information from the Student Press Law Center, SPLC, and have each of us have considered that. I know a couple of us have conducted our own sort of, you know, trying to do some additional background research about the topic, but we've not discussed it yet. Maybe we'll find time to talk about it tomorrow. In anticipation of your other question about the poverty bill, I remember that when we talked about it last time, the hearing had already come and gone. So taking a position typically occurs before the hearing so that we can either decide to testify or send a letter or not. So I will discuss a little bit further with you some of the work I've done on that. And we can talk about it again, but I'm not really sure at this point what change in that Monitor with Research position we would take. Does that answer your question?
Yes. I had one more follow-up question, and I could probably figure it out for myself. But do you know when the hearing for 1071 is going to be?
I don't, and I'm going to make eye contact with the person in charge of those things.
Because I just don't want the same.
Who seems to be shaking her head, but we'll see what she knows.
I don't want to be stuck in the same situation as LG840, so.
I appreciate that, yes, we will. I will make sure that we discuss it, but yes.
Excellent question, Ms. Full. It is not scheduled for next week, so we definitely have time to continue our conversations. The Education Committee does not have as many meetings this year because a lot of Mondays, so typically the Education Committee meets Monday and Tuesday. A lot of Mondays are recess days. And so we've been having very full Education Committee hearings, 10 to 13 bills a day, which causes a lot of late nights for Education Committee members. And this year, there were more committee meetings than had previously been. I'm also aware just generally, I know that the introducer introduced it, but it wasn't a priority for him as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? I'd just like to point out one more item up for a hearing this week on Monday is LB964, which was a bill written and proposed by the Omaha Public Schools introduced by Senator Duncan of Lincoln to give specific incentives to special education teachers to try to attract more individuals to the profession. So we're excited for that one to get a hearing on Monday. With that, we have a committee motion, it doesn't require a second. So Dr. McFarland, could you please call the roll?
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Full?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Motion carries. There are three receipt reports on the agenda this evening. Item K1, the 2023-2024 English Learner Refugee Report. Item K2, the Head Start Annual Report to the Public for 2022-2023. And item K3, the Head Start Monthly Board Report for December 2023. Moving to closed session, Mr. Smith?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Interim Superintendent, Interim Secretary to the Board and Legal Counsel pending litigation, negotiations and legal advice.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Full?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest, for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, interim secretary of the board, and legal counsel pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 6:59 PM.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 8:28 PM. Let the record reflect, the board meeting adjourned at 8:28 PM.